For students in grades three through six, as I'm sure you know that is a core part of our physical education curriculum and the students seem to really enjoy it. The Learn to Swim program for students in grades one to two will start in late spring and last for a shorter duration. Fifth graders recently completed and shared their Genius Hour projects, topics, just a handful of topics to share with you, included information about honeybees, bee forestation. One of my favorites was can robots hurt us? And the impact of video games, can robots hurt us? I know, right? I was like, I'm totally gonna hang out with you for a little while because I wanna know what you learned. So there was a wide variety of topics that the students learned about and investigated and created really, really beautiful presentations on. They had the opportunity to share their presentations with other fifth grade students and also with fourth grade students. So the fourth graders got a peek as to what they'd be doing next year. So that was pretty cool. Boosterathon is coming up. I'm sure you've been getting the information about that from the PTO. The Boosterathon team along with the PTO Executive Board joined us at a faculty meeting recently to share some information with all of the teachers. The pep rally is gonna be on the 27th and the fun run is gonna be on February 7th. We are hoping that we do as well this year as we did last year because all of the funds from the Boosterathon go to support the mini programs that the PTO provides to our students. And the very last thing is that our amazing librarians put together a very special morning event for our teachers, Star Books. So teachers got to come in a little bit early and enjoy a nice cup of coffee and take a look at books and recommend them to our students. And those are what's on display right now behind you and over there. So it was a really lovely way to start a morning, actually. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for myself?
Any questions for Bob or Lisa?
All right. So the next portion of our agenda is about our annual opportunity to recognize our open choice program, our open choice participation, and to acknowledge the number of seats that we'll be asking the program to reserve for us. Just in case you're wanna refresh your, the goal of the employees in the greater New Haven area are given options to enroll their children in schools with openings in a variety of grade levels. Beecher Road School has participated and embraced and found the open choice program to be very enriching, very successful for all of us, whether you live in Woodbridge or whether you live in New Haven. And so we continue that program over the past few years. Since I became superintendent, we've increased the number of seats from 12 to 17 currently. And tonight, I'm asking you to consider adding one additional space, that is an 18th seat. I'm doing that because I believe that we continue to enrich ourselves by increasing seats. I also want to recognize, and we've had the conversation around the dollar value that the open choice program also provides to our budget. If we maintain over 2% of our student population coming from the open choice program, we continue to receive a higher return per student in reimbursement. So given that we have opportunities to pose different grade levels and try to continue to keep our class size at the optimum level levels, I would ask you to consider moving from 17 seats to 18 seats for next year. And I'll take any questions or comments about that.
Get the motion. Motion, put the motion on the table.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that we increase our open choice enrollments to 18 slots for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second discussion.
So I ask that we do not increase it and that we keep our current enrollment that we have. Every person I've spoken to in the town regarding this issue has never voiced to me any desire to increase this. It's just been my personal conversations that I've had with the town, so I don't think that there's an appetite from other parents in the town to increase our numbers. I also don't think that we should be making a decision of this nature based on any kind of financial metric. We should make the decision that's in the best interest of the community and of the students and not allow the financial benefit that it may or may not give to us as part of our decision-making process.
Have you heard of the opposition to this? So you said you haven't heard support.
I have not heard support.
You've heard opposition.
Yes, I have heard opposition to it on two or three occasions. That's all. Mostly I hear that I don't, what I hear is that they don't support it. They don't think we should increase our numbers that we have. I've never heard someone say, I think we should abolish it. I've just, what I've always heard is that we should not increase the numbers that we currently have. They like the fact that we participate in the program, they don't think we should stop participating, but they think that we're at a good level and should maintain it. Was the general sentiment.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand the argument against it is the argument that it sounds like maybe the argument is that we don't have the capacity to do that well? Or is there some other argument that has to do with the nature of the program?
So I think that, yeah, the argument boils down to unintended consequences, that we don't know what our enrollment's gonna be. And if we increase enrollment through this way, we may not be able to sustain increased enrollment in another way. I also heard, well, I personally spoke to somebody who participated in this, I just happen to know them. And they explained to me that their eldest child participated in the program and then their younger child participated in the program. And if it was a random lottery, I don't really understand how that could have happened.
There's preferential for siblings.
It is, okay.
So the initial entry into the program is a random lottery for the town of New Haven, but if you have a sibling in the same family, they do get preferential treatment to allow the family of students.
Correct. And if that preferential treatment would exceed our allotment, would we then still give the preferential treatment or do they have to fill one of the slots?
I'm not sure you understand that question.
So let's say we have a number of 17 and the child of a sibling comes of age and would force us to be the 18th. Do we still allow the preference? Only if we have the seat of. Only if the seat is declared, would they have an opportunity as a sibling to join us or if there was a vacancy. And so each year, we have a few students who leave because they opt, they age out as a sixth grader and then we add them in and we generally add them to the kindergarten class because we want them to have a full experience, the full benefit of a Beecher K through six education. So that's kinda plays out. So it couldn't force us over our, whatever threshold we choose tonight, a sibling can't force us over that threshold? Correct. Okay. Only if we declare, yeah, right. Yes.
Can you just refresh our memory about the reimbursement, the thresholds for the reimbursement?
Sure. So it's $3,000 per student for under 2% and trying to keep over 2% and ensuring we are there, it's $4,000 per student. And Al, you helped remind me, I can't remember if sometimes there is an excess amount that we would get or not.
There is. The last two years, there's been, I wanna say like a $150, $200 per student, but again, that's only if the total choice program budget affords it. The districts are giving that, what Bob just quoted, the $3,000, $4,000, and I think $3,000 to $6,000. Those are givens unless they're changed in a subsequent budget year. But the last two years, there's been additional funds that have been distributed to participate in districts.
And can you clarify me, what is the average per pupil cost to educate someone at Beecher Road right now?
Around $18,000.
Around $18,000. And then, we don't get 18 plus $3,000, we get $3,000 for the student and then, I understand that doesn't cost $18,000 necessarily per student, but that is our per pupil cost, it's a net of $15,000, one could say.
That would not be an accurate assessment of how per pupil cost works. When we add a student into the school, we do not add $18,000 of cost to a school.
So what is the, when you.
Unless we add a teacher to, unless we add a teacher, which we wouldn't be doing in this situation.
So we have a situation where I would say we have a stepwise increase in budgetary. It's not, you know, we have some fixed costs that go on no matter what, and then there's variable cost. But really, when we add a teacher, so we add one kid and suddenly we decide because one extra kid, you need to add a whole classroom, that would be a significant increase to the budget. Adding one child to our school system, I assure you, if it's one child, it costs significantly less than that. And we would recalculate what our per pupil cost is across the number of students that we have. I can say we've had this discussion many times and there was a discussion several years ago about moving us up to 4%, which I spoke against because I am concerned about the size of our classrooms and I am concerned about classroom space. I think going from 17 to 18 to keep our commitment to 2% to me is a wash, it's really no different to me. So we made that decision of 2% as a sort of, as the number. Our school has increased a little bit, but I think if 18 students versus 17 students keeps us where we sort of made a commitment previously, I don't see that as a big deal. Again, I think if we said, we're gonna go to 3 or 4% and we added in 24 students or 48 students, that would totally change the financial implication in terms of classroom size and actually teachers that we hire. So I would speak in support of going from 17 to 18 because I don't see that as a real difference in our commitment to a 2% program. Other comments?
And then just to clarify, we definitely need this one increase to bring us to the 2%. The additional one will keep us at the 2%.
So we're always playing the what-if game of what's the enrollment gonna be next October 1st? And so if the enrollment goes to 851 students, one student over 850, and we didn't have the 18th student, then we only get a lower reimbursement. So it's a matter of, there's an unknown of how many kids will come to the door, but that's trying to, an 18th student keeps us at the right level, up to 900 kids, which is, we're far away from right now.
This is for all 2020?
Just coming home, right.
Any other comments before we vote? So again, the motion is to increase from 17 to 18 for the 2021, 2020, 2021 year. All those in favor of increasing to 18? All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. You're still up.
Okay, so we are, we will do our overall summary strategic plan out there for you right now, up on the screen. And, over to the podium. I just wanted to say that this is an opportunity we take every couple times a year to really just talk a little bit about where are we. This is a high-level summary in that it's really just a summary. We're not gonna hit a lot of details, we want to, we gotta move through it and then answer any questions you might have. For those of you who are newer to the board, this original plan, or the original addition of this plan, was constructed from my entry plan three and a half years ago, the focus groups that took place, the conversations with stakeholders across the school and the town, and also the superintendent profile that was constructed at that time. So that entry plan process allowed me to bring a stakeholder group together and to construct this plan, which has evolved over the last three and a half years. So time flies. Tonight, we're gonna show you the continued progress, but also we're gonna talk about at the very last slide, the fact that it's time to revisit this plan and to move forward with a Phase Two, if you will. This plan has strictly been, currently been a blueprint to guide the work that we do in the district. It is also work above and beyond the regular instruction and running of the school and things that we do. And hats off to the faculty and staff and administrative team for taking these initiatives on and moving us forward. It's a very ambitious plan. Whenever I show it to some of my colleagues, I say, that was way too ambitious, or it's way too ambitious for the size of the district and the size of the school or the size of the staffing you have to carry it out. But we've worked as hard as we can and done as much as we can and we've made great strides in this. So I wanna thank again the administrative team for assisting tonight, supporting and encouraging the staff as they do with all the things we do. So just on a quick note, we've seen some of these slides before, the mission and vision and beliefs were constructed in this particular process. And certainly, we're looking at the beliefs that we have that provide student support, academic skills are important, educating the whole child, integration, use of technology, staff, learning, engaging the community as partners, and fiscal responsibility are clearly the beliefs that drive what we do. In this plan, we constructed five goals for what we continue to consider continuous improvement around standards and expectations, student-centered and personalized learning, providing professional learning for everyone, building partnerships, and emphasizing diversity in community and maximizing efficiencies of systems and resources. These are goals for all of our students, not just some, but all of our students. As we go through tonight, we'll just hit the highlights again. Goal one is again about the standards and expectations. And our original priorities, which were completed, were really about developing a district vision and mission and developing a strategy for curriculum review and revision, which is mostly centered around math and science. Our renewed priorities last year, as we set them, were about how do we complete the job with math and science or work towards that, and also how do we look at long-range planning? So that continues, math has been completed, science in the upper grades has been completed, we're looking at science in the lower grades as we move through the year and into the summer, and there will be a focus on long-range planning for social studies and specials. I will say though that the challenge with curriculum development work here at Beecher Road School in Woodbridge is we do not have a curriculum director and the curriculum work is taken upon by the talented building administrative staff who have many other things to keep their minds on. But needless to say, a lot has been accomplished over the last few years in this area, especially in math and science. We also, this year, wanted to try to maximize and coordinate as much of our curriculum conversations or continuity conversations with AMITI. And so we've had regular math and science meetings between teachers, between the two schools, between middle school and here. And we continue to have conversations about planning for the vertical alignment of other areas such as social studies. All this is to really benefit students in terms of increasing and maximizing student achievement. I've spoken already about the fact that our science scores, I think one of the direct relations between our curriculum work and our science is that our kids were ready to think differently and to be assessed differently and to be thinking in the new generation science standards that we have focused on, fourth again in the state. But our math and language arts successes from our other work has not to be dismissed either. Top 10% in the state for math and language arts and our growth, where our kids rank in growth and growth goals is actually number five in the state for both of those areas. So it's just something that we are very, very proud of, our kids and our teaching staff and administrative support. We have used our coaching model to support teachers and we have started to initiate learning walks, which assist in reducing the variability between classrooms. So that really brings us up to date on the major parts of Goal One. Goal Two is all about student-centered and personalized learning. We put a big emphasis on bringing the school-wide enrichment model into Beecher a few years ago that was, has borne out in the cluster model for grades three and four and also project-based learning, the Genius Hour in fifth grade, and then the sixth grade capstone project. So lots of things have been established and they are now running. And I'm going to turn this over to Lisa and Cheryl, who are gonna talk a little bit more about personalized learning.
As Bob mentioned, the teams have embraced the initiative, the personal learning initiative. So in the third, fourth grade, they're doing the enrichment clusters. And fifth grade, they're doing Genius Hour, and sixth grade is capstone. They're doing this independently, they've taken off and run with it. So it's really an outstanding process that is pretty much, it's flowing at this point. In regard to the piloting, the maker spaces, our science and technology teachers have worked together and they have multiple, they have a couple of maker spaces. And that's an opportunity for students to have choice and discovery in their learning. So really some incredible learning and opportunities for them there.
A continued focus for our school has been around math workshop, which leads naturally into differentiation and curriculum compacting. And we have had some ongoing professional development in this area and coaching in this area with grade level teachers and our math curriculum coordinators. One powerful example of this work is we recently had a professional development day where Melissa Howie, who is a math consultant, she joined us and she actually had a focus on differentiation across two math domains. So this gave teachers the opportunity to work deeply with a domain above and below their grade level to really allow them to dive deep into that content standard and think carefully and critically about how to differentiate instruction across those two domains, excuse me.
Can you define curriculum compacting for me? I just don't.
Curriculum compacting?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. So curriculum compacting is when you give students the opportunity to take the pre- and post-assessment. And then after that, the students who score at a certain percentage rate, and I don't wanna give a number because I think I've done that in the past and it might not have been the correct number, so I wanna say it's like 95, 97%, but I'm not, I would have to double-check that. And then those students are given different work related to the current unit, but it would be different work for those students. So they would be compacted out of the unit. And it looks different in different classrooms. Some teachers have kids flow sort of in and out of lessons where they noticed on the post-assessment that they struggled with something, so the student will sit in for that lesson and do the work that day, but then the next day they might go back to different work. And some other teachers might run it that the whole entire unit, the students are working on something related to the content, but different than what the other students are doing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One more to clarify, can you just explain math workshop as a term, like workshop?
Yep, so it's workshop, so we are a reading and writing workshop and we've been shifting into math workshops. So it's really just thinking about teaching math in a similar way that we teach reading and writing. In math, there is a structured and focused mini lesson, there is student independent work time, and then there is an opportunity to sort of reflect and have a sort of closing opportunity to talk about the work that they did. Math is always a little bit different than reading and writing, it might not always follow that structure. Like there are some days where students might participate in a game related to the curriculum. So it's more about, okay, we're gonna play this game and then more of the workshop sort of happens afterwards when we sort of unpack the math within the game. So it's a little bit more fluid than reading and writing workshop, but just the thinking behind making sure that we're teaching in a way that is differentiated and that we're teaching in a way that allows for a lot of student independent work time and teacher conferring and teacher small group work and the opportunity to sort of all come together and talk about our math.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The tag program has transitioned. Last year, we made the change where previously students were identified where it was just by referral from a teacher or a parent where they'd had an assessment and then they were determined eligible or not. And then last year, we started where every single student in third grade takes the COGAT assessment, which has been fantastic, so you're not missing any students. Fourth, fifth, and sixth students that might have been missed, a referral can be made. But we've also refined that whole process, we're looking at multiple measures. And then once a student is identified as being in tag, there is tag programming where they, in addition to the enrichment clusters and all of those enrichment school-wide activities, just for these students, there is the tag programming where they leave their classroom once per six-day cycle and they're working on a variety of different things. Some examples of things is novel engineering, and that's basically where there's a book that they read, there's a problem in it, and then they're solving it through, solving the problem through engineering. They've done studies on migration, they've done increasing ideation and idea flow, research projects, and it's more things that they're choosing that they're interested in.
Do you data yet on differences in demographics since switching from the old paradigm to now using COGAT?
We have a little bit, there's a little bit fewer students. We're still above the 3% to 5% frame and, but we have less students because before it was a little more flexible, now it's very much, they're cut exactly what students need to have as a minimum standard to get.
Yeah, that's not my question.
Oh, sorry.
My question is about demographics of who's selected. So there's lots of literature on biases within certain standardized tests.
That is, we haven't collected data on that, but we, so you're thinking about the students who are, who have previously been eligible for tag versus the students who were eligible based on COGAT testing, what those demographics look like? Is that what you're?
Correct.
Okay, I don't know that we've ever. We've never done that. It'd be interesting to think about that, though. We've never looked at that closely.
Finally, the board then had an ad hoc enrichment committee in the past, and one of the big pieces of feedback that we received as a school is the need for increased communication. So out of that committee, one of the initiatives that we are working on this year is consistent communication specifically around mathematics instruction. So math unit newsletters are going out across all grade levels and they are going out at the start of every single unit. Some teachers send them electronically, some teachers send them hard copies, some teachers send them both, but those communications should be coming home regularly. You're not receiving them and you're a current parent of a Beecher Road School student, feel free to reach out to your teacher and ask them for it because they are there and I know that they're happening.
Thanks. So moving on to the third goal. Third goal is all about professional learning for all staff, not just certified teachers, but for everybody. And the original priorities that we set forth were really to first and foremost reestablish the professional learning community model in the building, that's teams of teachers. When we refer to professional learning community or your PLC team, that's talking about the meeting every few days where all the third grade teachers get together and talk about instruction or data or something related to the curriculum that they're teaching, something instructional. So reinvigorating the professional learning community model was something we did a few years ago. We brought in a guest facilitator and that is now a part of our, the fabric of our school. The other part of our original priority is really focused mostly around the differentiated professional learning plan that we do on professional learning days and making it a very, very personalized with a lot of choice for teachers. So it is meaningful to the work that they're doing in the classroom. I'm going to turn this over now to Assistant Principal Mrs. Merrill, who is gonna just talk a little bit about the renewed priorities that we've established for the current work that is going on in this area.
Currently, under our PLC model for data sharing and analysis, we've developed grade level data teams. The data teams work with our PLCs, looking at math and language arts data currently, which we will be moving into science data eventually. And we find this to be an incredible professional learning opportunity because the enriched conversations that go on are revolving around data from each individual team, grade level team. We also are working to enhance our professional learning opportunities for our teaching assistants and our custodians. We have a plan that is in place and will be finalized by the end of this school year. Some of the things that we have worked on with both teacher assistants and custodians include the GCN modules, which teachers and administrators also do. So we look at bloodborne pathogens and a wide variety of other things that relate directly to the work that we do with students. We also have, this year for the first time, built in some additional time for teaching assistants to be able to meet with their grade level teaching team more often and for special education staff to be able to meet with their special education teacher in helping them to perfect the plans and instruction for their students. We also have PMT training, which both certified and non-certified staff have been involved in. Learning walks as a pre- Learning walks as a professional tool. We initiated learning walks this year through our data team process, and we did that to ensure consistency across the grade levels in both math and language arts. This first go-around for the learning walks involves our data team members, which are our language arts coordinators, our math coordinators, myself and Mrs. Sherman, our principal. What we want to do eventually is to include more teachers because this has just been a really powerful learning experience for us as we go into the classrooms in pairs.
Thank you, Doreen. I do want to just mention one more thing about PLC, professional learning community teams and the model. And it's an interesting area to Google and find out a little bit. The DeFores, Richard and Becky DeForre, were the people who were really the founders of that or the founders of the concept. Richard DeForre passed away last year sadly, but they really established this important school improvement model, I guess I'd call it that. It really is founded on a few really important pillars. One is the whole idea that collaboration is much better than working in isolation. And back when I went to school, back 150 years ago, teachers, I do believe, probably worked in isolation and they just did their own thing in their classroom. They may have said hello to their neighbor, but it wasn't teams of teachers working and sharing strategies and all that. Collaboration is beneficial to our kids and is beneficial to teachers in teaching the kids. Second one is shared strategies. In that collaboration, it's built to share what works and share what doesn't work. So no one goes that way and make sure you avoid the things that are not successful. And third, it's really, it's an unrelenting focus on student success and student achievement. So those are the things that really, the quick, the pillars of a professional learning community model. As we move on to the fourth goal, the fourth goal in our plan is all about partnerships and the value of diversity and community. I will say that I believe that the open choice model and open choice participation that we talked about a little earlier in the meeting, I see this as one part of the enriching aspect of working towards this goal. Our original priorities were again around these words of partnerships and community. And one of the things we did establish early on was a new committee called the Community Diversity Committee, Community Diversity Committee, which has been evolving over time and interesting work that has gone on. And I'm going to turn this over to Cheryl and Lisa, who will talk a little bit more about our renewed priorities in this area.
As you've heard us discuss previously, we've had increase in student need. So last year, we added intermediate classroom focused on social emotional needs of students. And this year, we're actually adding, as you've heard, a classroom for our primary students around social emotional learning. It's actually officially starting tomorrow, so it's, we're very excited for that and it really helped to meet the needs of these students. And Lisa, I think you want to talk about responsive classroom?
I do. We also have had a continued focus on responsive classroom. As you know, that is one of our major philosophies here at Future Road School. And in addition to some ongoing faculty meeting time dedicated directly to responsive classroom learning, we also have this year, I don't know if everyone loves it, but we're doing it anyways, we're starting every single faculty meeting with some of the way our students start their days with a greeting and a message and an activity. Today, we got to walk like zombies and share our favorite books, and it's always a lot of fun and lots of smiles around the room. So we are sort of continuing to do that work with our faculty in a nice effort to build community within our adult learners. In addition, we had talked previously about the possible merging of the Safe School Climate Committee and the Community Diversity Committee. And as we continue to have those conversations, we realize that the work that those two committees are doing really complement each other, but continue, there was a continuing need to keep those two committees separate. So those committees have remained separate. We did have a purposeful focus this year, continue to have, I shouldn't say past tense, we continue to have a purposeful focus on school climate, and we're doing that in a number of different ways. In addition to the responsive classroom that I mentioned, we also started the year, as I'm sure you already know, with a fabulous keynote speaker who really started the year with a lot of positive energy for us, lots of laughter, lots of really great pearls of wisdom. We continued focusing on climate with the staff by a kindness cart, which comes out probably about once a month, and teachers are treated with different yummy treats. And we also actually had a waffle bar over, right before the holidays as a sort of yay, it's the holidays. And we also have provided teachers with a number of kind notes and staff shout-outs. For our students, we created a kindness tree where they got to display their acts of kindness. And there are some kindness ninjas that can occasionally be seen sneaking around the building doing random acts of kindness. We also have continued our peaceful bus initiative with a renewed attention to continuing that work of building a bus community. And finally, we are working and continuing to work on building partnerships locally, regionally, and globally. One way that we are doing that is through the work of our student council. They have had a number of opportunities to partner with the Amity Leos and also, they have visited the senior center. Our second graders for the first time ever this year went and visited the senior center and did some caroling. We once again created our cards for veterans and delivered those to the VA hospital, and we will be doing the same actually for Valentine's Day, we're creating some Valentine's Day cards. We also, we had a sixth grade teacher who spearheaded care packages for the homeless. That was Katie McCollum, which was a really tremendous opportunity for our students to give back to the local community. And finally, it's really worth mentioning that State Representative Themis Clarides, nominated teacher to receive a grant from a company called Pharma, and that is going to allow all of the students to participate in a STEAM activity, K through six. So we are very, very grateful that we are able to do that. The diversity committee, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this, the diversity committee has been meeting regularly. We actually have a meeting tomorrow. And one of the pieces that came out of the diversity committee was a walkthrough protocol, which was one of our professional development faculty meetings. We provided teachers with a walkthrough protocol and they actually went back into their classrooms and looked at their classroom libraries and their classroom spaces with the lens of inclusivity, and then came back and sort of reflected on the work that they've done and the work that they need to do. And it ended up being a really, really powerful and moving conversation with a lot of teachers sort of reflecting on their classroom libraries and what they thought they had done and the things that they needed to do differently. So it was really powerful learning that the diversity committee sort of helped spearhead.
Were there diversity programs that were run for Martin of Community?
So that looks, yes, is the short answer. The long answer is that it looks different in different grade levels and different classrooms. So in kindergarten and first grade, what they do is very different than what you might see in fifth and sixth grade. So yes, in some form or another, there was conversations.
At the classroom level?
Classroom level, yes, classroom level.
I do want to say from that goal, a lot of the things that you heard about in regards to community and positive school culture and climate are direct response and purposeful planning and thoughtful planning regarding some of the survey questions and some of the survey feedback that we received. And so the administration has purposed to lead that and also to model it. And as was mentioned by Lisa, there's been, there's a lot of just teachers taking initiative to do other things that administration didn't lead because they felt very, 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 very strong about that.
Happy, they felt happy.
Very happy, yeah. It's great to see smiling people. But bottom line is that's a direct response to the survey, which we wanted to move the needle on because happy learners are more productive learners, I guess you could say, whether they're adults or kids. Our last goal, which is all about maximizing efficiencies and systems and resources, we had original priorities that we spent some time on. Our SRBI model, which is really our intervention model, has been molded over the last couple of years, as well as our special education service delivery in terms of expanding the number of rooms. You've already heard that a little bit. We continue to look at roles and responsibilities and processes for efficiencies. And I'm going to just hit the highlights here and talk a little bit about what are we doing now, what are our current, current plans or current work. We continue to work in the SRBI intervention area, and the big thing for us right now is increasing the menu of reading interventions so that we have the right reading intervention fitting the need of the individual student. It was once upon a time where we had one reading intervention, what was that one called? Do you remember? And everybody had, that was the one everybody was going to improve their reading with. Now we have four, or five, or six that meet the different needs, what the students might have. Fiscal strategies for future budget planning, we know that we had a very, very positive first go-around of initiating a budget task force here, which really mirrors the town task force, a great stakeholder participation by Board of Ed members, parents, staff members. And so a number of savings ideas came out of that, not only for the year moving forward, but also for future years as we, as we plan for FY22 and FY23. A year or so ago, we really tried to move the needle and decidedly have a, well, sustainability was on our minds. We had a sustainability ad hoc committee. Yes, there was another ad hoc committee called a sustainability one. We, out of that, we established the Green Team for Beach Road School, which is part of the Green Leaf Program. I'm happy to say, I'm telling you, this, this area has far surpassed what I ever expected it might look like only four, five, or six months in. We have a tremendous food waste program going on in the cafeteria and to such an extent that actually Vito Esparro, our facilities manager, and Jane Roddy, our cafeteria manager, were invited to go to a local, it's called the Scrog, I hate it, the Scrog. This is a Scrog conference. Don't test me what Scrog stands for, but.
I think it's Southern Connecticut region of government.
Well, thank you, Al. Thank you very much. Those are two Gs or one G? I don't know. But any rate, the Scrog conference, and they were, they were the hit of the conference. They were front and center and people asked them all about what Beecher's doing. So, and we've had some great teacher and parent leadership in this area, so sustainability is alive and well, and there'll be other chapters in that book that will be written as the time goes on. In terms of facility stewardship, this is the second or third year that we have done a school-town collaboration and that we've brought the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen around to see what the needs are of the building as we talk them, to them also about the capital needs and the capital budget process. And I'm going to ask Doreen Merrill to come up and just talk a little bit about our beautification committee and the kinds of things that we have done to try to beautify a very large facility and a very, a facility that has many parts to it. Doreen, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I've been on beautification since its inception just a couple of years ago, and now I get to chair beautification. It's a group of teachers, Ms. Piazek is also on as a representative of the board, and we get together about six or seven times a year. And we've been looking at the larger common spaces within the building and trying to beautify or improve those. So one, a couple of the things that we've done is if you go down the main hallway, when you come into the building, you'll see a blue striping going down that main hallway, which was something that we added to enhance the artwork that is hung above it. So it's just about at chair rail height, maybe three feet above, above the flooring, which added a whole lot to the entrance to the building. We've done a revamping of the south gym. The south gym got painted and a new rock wall put up and just brightened things up so much down there, so the south gym looks great. Another thing that we've done is we had the facia when you walk in the building and where we usually hang the Halloween hoot sign. Last year, the faculty voted on half a dozen or so words that we felt would be inspirational to students and faculty members alike. So Linda Atchison and Ashley Wagner, our art teachers, actually drew out of what those words were going to look like. This summer, Linda actually bought all the materials and worked on that all summer long at home. And it was just Vito and custodians just placed that up. It's covered with butcher paper, and we are going to have an unveiling of those six, seven, or eight inspirational words, which I think is really going to enhance when people come into the building, it will be like right, right in front of you. So we're very excited about that. The other thing that we were very happy to do was we have lots of murals that have been painted throughout the building by former Beecher students from, from long ago. And what we've done is, is we've added plaques naming what the name of the mural was and the year that the mural was put down. So we're, we're trying to preserve our, our history. So it's, it's a small group of people, no budget, but I think we've done some things that will really, that have really impacted the school in a positive way.
Thank you, Doreen. And just the last item on that, on that page is just the fact that we continue to look at efficiencies through processes, structure, staffing. Certainly a couple of examples of that is, you've already heard about it again, again, how we use our special ed staffing or the expanded staffing for the special needs that we have in our building to keep students at Beecher Road School. And also the, the changing nature of how we utilize the talents of our teaching assistance staff. Once upon a time, there was many more regular education teacher assistants for the regular general help than there were special education, and that has completely flipped. And most of our teacher assistants are now for special education support needs. We've overall, for the most part, not increased the overall number of our teacher assistants, but certainly the focus of their work has, has changed over time. Just, I'll just hit this slide and then we'll take any questions, comments, and other observations. So the work of the current plan, of the slides you just saw, of the five goals continues this year, but this really is the conclusion of really the three years that were anticipated. And it's really now time to hit the reset button. An overall general focus or sense or planning for Phase Two would look similar in some ways to what I did three years ago, which is again, establishing a guiding coalition of stakeholders, representative group, and it would involve as well a town, some town representation as well in that, in addition to the typical stakeholders that we use. I would suggest that we move our annual survey up from the end of April, May to more like March, and even utilize that opportunity to add a few open-ended questions to the same survey you remember from last year, adding open-ended questions that I had from three years ago. A, what are the strengths of Beecher Road School? B, what are the needs? And C, what are your hopes and dreams? And we may even throw in a couple of questions about the calendar in there, the survey that we want to do for a calendar that we need to make sure we get parents to draw some views on. I would then move towards gathering those stakeholders together, and we would review our current plan that you've just seen, survey data, other data, wholesome focus groups as needed, and start a plan revision. The next plan may look very different than this. It may not look like this at all. It may have a complete different look and a complete different feel. And, and I would suggest it probably be a little shorter and a little bit more doable and attainable within the boundaries of, of the staffing we have, and then eventually presenting that plan to the Board of Education. So I'll take any questions, comments, or observations you might have about what we've presented tonight. Anyone have questions for Bob?
So that's July of this year that you're going to present a new plan or next year?
That would be, it's July this year, right?
Yeah. That was the only fair question.
So I'd just say thank you for that presentation and thank you for all of you for engaging in that discussion. I thought it was wonderful. No one has any questions? Wow. Anything else?
I think if I'm hearing any questions, I'd take that as, as a general affirmation that looking at that timeline and some of the things on that timeline, you know, moving the survey ahead and trying to get those things accomplished are meet with your favor. Certainly there'll be, there'll be board representation on this, on this group. That's, that's an important component. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is upcoming meeting presentations. You want to mention those? So, at the next meeting we had on the agenda, discuss sort of Facilities Committee overview, school performance report, and the summer program plans.
Right. So, you might remember that Lynn did a curriculum committee overview a couple meetings ago, I think, and so, so our esteemed Facility Subcommittee Chair would do something similar, and we can work with you on that. But that's, that's what we would, it would basically just an overview of what we're looking at for the year, in terms of the things we've done or the things we're planning on, focusing our time on as a Facility Subcommittee. The school performance report is the annual accountability report. We actually get this sent to us by the state, and they apparently are going to have it even earlier this year, they think the end of this month. We would typically try to present that at the following board meeting as long as there's enough time, because we usually have to do a little bit of adding to it, some observations of the data, analyzing that, looking at what recommendations we have coming out of that. So, there are, there's past school performance reports, called accountability reports, in our, in our past agendas, usually around the March of every year. And the summer program plan is a very, very brief report, just saying, you know, what are we planning for the summer programs, are there any changes, what are the dates we've decided upon, et cetera. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about those, or has some, some things that they would want to see, or...
Okay. Thank you. Facilities Committee.
Sure. Bob touched on some of the highlights earlier, but we met on 1:10, 7:30. Before the recess, the project floor work was completed, also a lot of staff training, regional staff training, which I thought was great. As Bob mentioned, one of the boilers went into fall, it's being looked at, there's no issue, it's going to work just fine. The Cleanback Valley statistic report was completed and reviewed, basically highlighted the progress of the Tools for Schools program, so things headed in the right direction. It was a little fraudulent things you could work on, but other than that, nothing glaring, I think of the overall positive report. And then Phase Two H-back upgrades was completed December, they're looking into the final pricing for the retro commissioning program.
Great. Any questions for Jeff? Finance Committee, Joyce was not here, we wish her daughter well, she had a little accident, but it sounds like she's on the mend. Finance Committee met, we went over the sort of ongoing financials, we're showing a small surplus at this point. One discussion that came up to make everyone aware is, we do have a significant number of known leaves, medical leaves during the year, and when there are medical leaves, obviously people use their vacation time, which means they continue sick time, they stay away, but we do have to hire some temporary substitutes for those times. So, we are looking at probably having some unintended expenditures above sort of budget, so we are going to sort of take a close look at some of the expenditures that we don't necessarily need to accomplish yet, and see if we can sort of manage that as the year progresses. Other than that, if there's anything else outside of reports, any questions about finance? Curriculum Committee.
Curriculum Committee met on Thursday, January 16th. We had a presentation on the math program, lots of discussion around that, and so Bob is going to look into having the math consultant from the State Department come and speak to us to give us some additional information, as well as a representative from Amity, since we feed into the Amity district, to add some information about math curriculum and the extension into the Amity district. So if anyone has any questions that they want asked of those two people, if they would direct those questions above, we will pass them on for our future meetings.
Okay. Any questions for Lib? Is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Our seats for Lib. Policy Committee.
Policy, we have reconvened. We had our meeting this morning at 8:00 AM, and went over four policies, two of them we put on for 30-day review, and two we are not sure about potentially tweaking a little bit of language and waiting for a little bit of feedback from CAE to see what they suggest on that, but that's about it. And our next meeting will be February 11th at 8:00 AM.
Any questions for Megan? CAE liaison report. Keep going.
I think I'm, I'm pretty sure I mentioned this last time, but this is the last opportunity to say it. CAE, our areas, Area 7, and the Legislative Breakfast, which is for board members, superintendents, and legislators to discuss educational issues, is coming up, and I realize I didn't write the date down, but I believe the 27th of January. We all should have received emails about it. It is coming up in a few weeks, so if anyone's interested, please, please do that, that would be great to get us out into the community a little bit more. Oh, and they're featuring the famous breakfast colony, so I don't know if that would entice anyone. I don't know what that means for sure, but it sounds good, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about CAE and cost of the district. So, I noticed that one time I was looking at the things, and there was a cost to attend the CAE conference, or whatever it was. Is that a cost that would be burdened by the school district, by the board of ed member, or is that something that's included in our CAE membership? Because I know that we already have a CAE membership.
So it's, the school district pays, if you're interested in going to the CAE cap's convention, the school district pays for that, or if there's another training, there's training, right, right, Mike Marsh on that? We, right? And so, yeah, so there's, there's, I think there's a reduced fee, I think if you're a CAE, if you're a CAE district, participating district, there may be a slight price break on some of those things, but otherwise, we, we will pay that for you, because that's part of that goal in, for board members of, you know, professional learning for board members, and just in terms of your roles, your, you know, the kinds of things you come in contact with in your jobs as a board member. Thank you for that clarification.
Also, just to, it looks it up just to be sure, sorry, the 27th is the RSVP date, the 29th at 7:30 AM is the actual breakfast, just to clarify.
Any other questions about CAE? All right, we'll move on to new business. We have to act on two certified staff retirements. Let me get the motion and then show it to you.
I move that we accept the retirements of Dolores D. Don and Naomi Reisfeld back to June 30th, 2020, with regret.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I just want to say that these are two very talented, very dedicated teachers who have meant a lot to Beecher Road School students and Beecher Road School parents and the whole school community over the years. I'm just going to read a brief, brief but important recognition of these two people. Naomi Reisfeld started at Beecher Road School in 1990 as a second grade teacher. Naomi moved to grade three in 1997, and until 2008 and '09 school year, when she moved to fourth grade. Naomi started the extended day program in 1993-94 school year, and served as its director until 1996. She served as a team leader for both grade three and four, and she's recognized as a thoughtful educator who searches out new ideas to improve the learning process, to stretch her students academically and socially. Naomi has served on the WA committees, including policy and faculty enhancement. She has held as an annual events, classroom celebrations, including grandparents' Day, diversity day, multicultural feast. She has produced the Reisfeld Register, must be a newspaper, right, and developed classroom partnerships with Orange Public Schools as well as Modesto California. So Naomi will be greatly missed, and we appreciate all that she has brought to Beecher Road. Dolores D. Don started at Beecher Road School in first, as a first grade teacher in the year 2000, she taught grades two, three, and four. I like this one, students would often comment that this is Don has eyes in the back of her head. We know what that means. D. served as a team leader along the way, and she did what's called looping several times, where she took her, for instance, her second grade class, and the following year moved with them to the third grade. So they stayed with her and had two years in a row with her, so she's, she's been a looper a couple of times during her tenure, a great educational practice. D. is recognized for her child-centered environment, high standards of behavior, her classmates where children feel comfortable and happy, and students consistently engaged and excited about learning. D. has been nominated for the Teacher of the Year on several occasions. These are two exceptional educators who will be greatly missed by the Beecher Road School community.
I just want to add that it's always incredible to me that when people retire from this district, the length of time that they spend here. I mean, I think one of the nice things about Beecher Road School, when you look at our strategic school profile, we have some of the longest duration and teacher tenure of most of the schools in the area. I never had, I never had any of these teachers, my kids never had missed Don, but I will say I have four children, and we had Ms. Reisfeld five times. She did loop with one of my kids, and she will be missed. As a small aside, she lives in my mother-in-law's neighborhood, so I see her all the time. So they will, they will both be sorely missed in the school, and we really appreciate everything they've done for our kids. So, all those in favor of accepting the retirements? Any opposed? Not that you really can oppose, but it's nice that you voted in favor. Thank you. All right. New biz, other biz.
Can we miss unfinished business?
Where?
I was just looking at like the order of business.
If we don't have unfinished business, there is no unfinished business.
So we have this 360 review thing that has been brought up every meeting.
That's an executive session.
What progress you made on getting...
It's executive session.
Okay.
Public comment.
Anyone else just speak up?
Okay.
Hold again, the three, whoops.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
So, before we go off on new business then, are you going to go to adjourned, executive session?
Yeah, okay.
So, as far as the comments that were made, you know, they specifically asked us to make a comment as a board of ed, and we need to try to like figure out how we're going to discuss this and come up with a comment that was made. I'd like to bring to the other board members' attention that on, in September, we actually reviewed the policy for health assessments and immunizations, and we reratified our policy that allowed for the exemption in it. So just recently, we said, you know, as a board, that we thought it was a good idea to keep that exemption in there. So a very easy comment we could make as a, as a board, and just put this out there for consideration, is that we reviewed our policy on September, you know, 5th, we thought it was a good policy, and we asked the state not to make any legislation that would cause us to have to modify our policy. And we're just basically supporting our current position.
So the, we can, so first we have to vote to add that topic to the agenda. So, again, when we don't appropriately notice a discussion, we get only one side of a point of view, and so, we just have to be careful about making a decision without having properly noticed to the public, so that the public can then come and comment on both sides of the discussion. So, in order to do something like that, we would have to add that to the agenda, which requires a supermajority of the board to vote to add the agenda of discussing. We can do that, I'm happy to have that vote, if, you know, if you want to move that we add a discussion of, I don't know, the religious exemption issue to the agenda.
For tonight or for our future meeting?
Well, we certainly can add it to a future meeting, that is, we can just put that on the agenda, but if we're going to add it tonight, it takes a supermajority only because we don't have the opportunity to hear from both sides of concern. Okay.
So I would like to make the motion that we add to the agenda for tonight, the discussion of policy 5141.3, which refers to health assessments and immunizations, and the public comment that was made referencing that policy.
Okay. Is there a second to add it to the agenda?
I'll click it up.
Okay. Is there discussion about adding it to the agenda? Not about the merits of the, of the discussion, but about adding it, is there a reason? We could always add it to another agenda. Correct.
Right, so we're talking about adding it to next time?
No, no, he's suggesting, that was a motion to add it to tonight's agenda.
Okay.
So the...
Only due to the timeframe, that is why I recommend it tonight.
Okay.
I would just comment that I think this is a very important issue to have both sides talk on and have the option to talk on, so I prefer not to add it to tonight's agenda.
Okay. Again, on the merits of adding it to the agenda is really what the discussion is right now, I know.
The rule about needing a supermajority has to do with that point, right?
Correct.
Of having the opportunity to have both sides heard, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the motion to add it to the agenda tonight, not supporter against just adding it to the agenda, all those in favor of adding it to tonight's agenda, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, it doesn't pass, it won't be added to the agenda, but we will add it to our next meeting agenda.
Okay, so you don't need to make a motion to add it to the next agenda, next meeting.
Well, we have a meeting prior to that 2/19 deadline.
Our next board meeting for a regular meeting is the 25th, I believe, Monday, the 25th?
24th.
24th?
Yeah.
So there's no way for us, unless we call a special meeting to discuss it?
Correct.
There'd be no way to make a call?
Well, is that legislation open that day? I don't know that any votes happen that day.
Yeah, I mean, the state legislature doesn't vote on anything until the end of session. So all it means is that the first committee is bringing it up for discussion, it will be amel, I mean, it doesn't help us on that day, so.
Thank you for that.
All right. I need a motion for us to go into executive session.
I move that we enter executive session to receive an update on safety and security and to conduct the mid-year evaluation of the superintendent.
For a second. All those in favor?
Nope, I, sorry. So, I actually make a counter motion that we postpone our executive session until next meeting. Joyce is absent, and, you know, I think that all the board members should be here for the mid-year review of our, so if you want to go in to discuss safety and security, no problem, but I ask that the discussion of the mid-year review be held until Joyce returns. She rarely misses a meeting, and obviously it's important.
I don't know how we, I don't really know how to vote on that. I think we can discuss it in executive session, I don't, I think, I think that the motion is really to go into executive session.
You can actually discuss it there.
And then discuss that.
If you want, if you want, it can be discussed.
Okay.
That's fine, I can accept that.
All right. All those in favor of going into executive session? All right. We'll take three and a half minutes to clear the camera.